Just turn on the video.
There we go.
Very good.
How are your parents doing?
Yeah.
See that.
Yeah, we still got to drive.
Yeah.
Certainly slow down.
Yeah.
Don't go fishing anymore.
All right, sorry to interrupt, but we're gonna go ahead and get the meeting started. We had an executive session earlier, so we already picked off the meeting, did the pledge and everything. But our first order of business this evening is we have a public hearing for medical marijuana registered caregiver performance standards and licensing that was posted at 6:30 PM. Give me a moment to find documents. I think in summary, these have been posted online for quite a while now. This ordinance is intended to add a little bit more regulation around medical marijuana registered caregivers and home occupation. I feel like this is something we've been working on for a very long time. This is the big day. Anyone from the public have any questions or comments regarding these zoning ordinance changes? Anyone from the council want to add anything? Anyone on Zoom? All right, well, we will go ahead and close the public hearing at 6:31 PM. All right, to kick off our regular business, we have all five counselors present. We'll jump into our meeting minutes from previous meetings. First one, April 25th, 2023. Does anyone have any edits to this one? For the public hearing, sorry.
We accept the minutes for the public hearing on April 20, 2023, as written.
Thank you. Have a motion and second discussion. All those in favor will do roll call. Jessica, hi.
Yeah.
John.
Hi.
Yeah.
Hi.
I have my motion has a five year. Next up, we have council meeting minutes from April 25th. Any edits from anybody on this one?
I have a question.
Yeah.
In regards to their page, motion by Ms. Cook. The in regards to that, we're back and we did the vote and said that they would say indefinitely table. We had that conversation around definitely tabling. And then we went back and we voted for change it to like a later date or something like that. Not, we didn't leave it as indefinitely.
We first, the first thing that happened was we had we modified the motion to put a specific date on it. And then afterward, at the last meeting, we voted to indefinitely table it until further notice.
And if I may, that's when I piped in erroneously.
Yeah.
So I unfortunately took the liberty to put it back to what you originally voted, making that comment. I probably should have asked first.
Does that make sense?
I just wanted to make sure that we, I thought we got what we wanted to do correct and that this was reflecting that night. The whole thing was kind of dimple than mine, so I want to make sure we're.
I think though, I think if I read this, the way this is noted, this is that item is basically tabled until we bring it back to the agenda, which is what we want.
That's what I just want to make sure I was messing it up in my head. Great.
Okay. Yep.
Madam Chair, we accept the weeks. Yeah, we accept the town council meeting minutes of 4:25, 2023 is written.
Second.
You have a motion and second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Jessica, aye.
Aye.
John.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes by zero. Thanks everyone. And next we have the treasures warrant from May 3rd, 2023. I'll just go ahead and make a motion to, I'll make a motion to sign the treasures warrant from May 3rd, 2023 in the amount of $871,865.14.
Second.
Thank you. Motion and second. This one does include the school payment, so it's a big one. Any other discussion or notes on this one? All those in favor of signing the treasures warrant, say aye. Jessica.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Yeah.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes by zero. Yay, okay, we got through the boring stuff. Up next, we've got reports and presentations. We have a big one this evening. Our South Burke Police Department went through the process and the chief, I hope you can maybe speak to the process a little bit to get to the place where our South Burke Police Department is accredited. And that's very exciting.
Yeah.
Yeah, please.
Also you are.
Give me a minute. My name is Zetol and I retired as police chief in Thelma about four and a half years ago. And what I'm gonna do tonight, give you a little background on the program where it started. Not a lot of background will be involved. But where the program started, what it's all about. The Sean Larry is here from Dargo Safety, which is the company we partner with as main chiefs. And he will talk about what self-burrow had to go through to achieve this. So about 10 years ago, group of us got together, administrators from across law enforcement in Maine. We decided that there was really no accreditation program in the state that could benefit police departments and communities other than the national program, KLEA, which is extremely expensive for small communities, it would be next to impossible to do. So we worked for about five years, putting together the program that was represented in chiefs, in sheriffs, state police, having the police safety, the warrant service. We explored all the different policies. We researched on the state to take material from the states. We put together what we thought was a great program. We took it through the main chiefs, board directors, the sheriffs. Everybody approved it and we got started with processing departments. And I don't want to cut into Sean's dirt because Sean's gonna get into what self-burrow went through. But this is a very intense program. It's not an easy program to achieve. And one thing you should know is it's not forever. It's a three-year stamping approval and accreditation in three years and it's through the same process again. Do we approve for accreditation? So Sharon, you want to take over for Sharon and then we'll do presentation.
All right. Thank you very much for having us. Chief told and said, I'm Sean O'Leary. I actually retired at the 30th year in law enforcement as a chief up in Winslow. Main accreditation, as the chief said, is not a very easy process at all. It's not a rubber stamp. This is pressing the 167 standards and each standard, the agency who's going through accreditation have to meet. In certain during a national accreditation, you can waive a couple of standards. But in Maine, you have to meet all the standards. And what the standards are, are that they are the best practice policies and procedures that main law enforcement that we require them to do. This process took several years because the chief had to review the policies, had to make sure his staff understood, read those policies. Then along with that, he had to all, the department had to go through certain training requirements to ensure that they are training with their firearms, their leadership training, conducting investigations, performance evaluations. So once the department are also training on certain policies, those high-risk policies that get a lot of agencies into trouble, like uses of force, implicit bias policing, vehicle pursuits and stuff like that. So after reviewing all the policies, having, having their staff sign for those policies, accepting them as law, going through all the training, then they had to provide proof. So they had to do a lot of research, going through their records to show the assessors who were gonna come, who came into their department and to prove that if they have a policy on A, that their agent, that their staff is trained. So they have to prove by paperwork that they had, they took this training. And then they have to provide any reports that go with that, with those standards. After they completed all those tasks, then they invited three outside, or actually two outside subject matter experts who are main law enforcement trainer assessors and basically opened up the door and said, take a look at our policies, take a look at what we're doing and to be completely assessed. In addition to that, the two assessors came here, took a tour of the facility, put a lot of questions to the chief and the lieutenant and then walking through and talking to other officers and say, hey, if this happens, what's your policies do? Or what are you supposed to do with your policy? And without question, their staff was, was very informed. They were able to answer those questions. The other thing is what we did is that what we've identified as a high critical area is the property room. Go, we went into their property room. We took a bunch of evidence and said, okay, I want you to find this property on, in your system. So it was a checks and balances. So it was about three and a half year process, a lot of sleepless nights. I know the lieutenant and I constantly were sending emails back and forth, say, Jeff, I need a proof regarding this. And he'd go out and he'd send me, he'd look for those proofs and, and send it and, and build the assessment. But one of the things is it's just not those two gentlemen who are very professional, but it's an entire team effort. So it's just not two people who are doing all the work. Every single officer in the South Burke Police Department really had the buy-in for this, for this task. So I'm pleased to announce, to announce that the South Burke Police Department is fully accredited under the main law enforcement accreditation program. And I'd like to read the plaque for serving as a model of excellence in law enforcement and successfully meeting the professional stand, standards established by the main chiefs of police in the main law enforcement program. The South Burke Police Department has reached the highest level of professionalism and integrity and is hereby recognized as a state accredited law enforcement agency for a period of three years. So over the next, every year, they're gonna have to build these proofs because in three years we'll come back and we're gonna hammer them and say, hey, show us these proof. The other thing is about being accredited because the town is part of Maine municipal. The police department now receives a 15% reduction in the liability insurance, which is a savings for the town. So I would like to be the first one, gradually. Oh, so we have now 19 agencies that are accredited and that's out of 120. So our hope is that other agencies in this, in this area, we'll see how successful South Burke is, use them as a, a source of reference and, and more and more agencies, because main law enforcement is a very professional and dedicated agencies and we're growing and growing. So outstanding. Chief.
That they just made it.
Go look over here and smile. Thank you. If I'm on the back of the line.
Thanks for coming in.
All right, it's very exciting. Next, we have a writing contest award. So there was a contest put out recently to submit a piece discussing what South Burke is about. And this evening, I believe we have two of our recipients here. So first, we have Gregory Wollett. Did I, did I say that correctly? Great. So Gregory won first place for what is, what is South Burke, what's South Burke is about contest. Thank you so much for your submission. I have here a certificate for you that I'll just read and a little gift certificate. So struggling. So this is a certificate, certificate of recognition presented to Gregory, Gregory Wollett for his first place entry in the What Is South Burke About? Writing Contest. Thank you. Thank you so much. Yeah. And then for second place for the What Is South Burke, what South Burke, I can't say that, What South Burke Is About? Writing Contest, we have Tamara Milliard. Thank you so much. Can I shake your hand? Thank you so much for coming in. And then lastly, we have our third place winner who was not able to make it this evening, but her name is Rebecca Henry and she is also presented with a certificate of recognition for her third place entry to the What Is South Burke About? Contest. This will be the round call for Rebecca to pick up whenever she's able to. Thank you all for your submissions. Those were fun for us to read and review. So thank you. Stuck.
You mind if I take a picture of the vote to get it? We won't look as important as the police.
Might get a friendlier reception.
Yeah. Oh, in front of your swag.
Congratulations. Thank you both for coming in this evening. You're welcome to stay. You're welcome to leave. Great. Up next, we have public comment. So this is a time, if anyone from the public, whether on Zoom or in the room, wants to speak on anything that is not on the agenda, each person will be given three minutes to address whatever they'd like to. And I see Pat is raising her hand. Hi, Pat.
Hi. Excuse me. I'm gonna read something. It'll be easier. I'm just want announcing events the South Burke Conservation Commission is doing and one is in conjunction with the land trust. First one is Saturday. It is the migratory bird walk. It's nine to 11 at the South Burke Town Hall, Town Forest. It is World Migratory Bird Day. And so we will be walking through the town forest led by Brett Cropp, who is a member of the Conservation Commission. And it is intended for adults, but kids are welcome. So it'd probably be better for older kids. You can find the information, all of the information is on the town website at the, the news. But I'll give you the email address. It's conserve sb@outlook.com for more information or to RSVP for, for the bird walk. And then Thursday, May 18th, we are conducting the annual well water testing partnership with Nelson Analytical where they give the town residents a discount. And that is water kits can be picked up at the town hall and they're, they're available there year round. And they need to be dropped off at town hall on the second floor, pretty much the same place between 7:30 Thursday morning until about, until noon. And you can call Nelson Analytical if you have any questions. And again, that's on the website and it was posted in the Sentinel as well. And then we have Thursday evening, May 18th, on Zoom, 6:30 to about 7:30, a native plant webinar with Sean Dalbert of Native Hunts. He is, it's a native plant business in Alfred. And this webinar, he'll be talking about invasive plant management and theory about native plants and how to manage invasive plants. And you can go to greatworksgwrt.org to get the, to register and to get the Zoom link. So that's what I've got for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pat. Did anyone else on Zoom or in the room have anything to speak on this? Did anyone else on Zoom or in the room have anything to speak on the agenda? Alright, can go on and get into our unfinished business. Unfinished is number one, action on appointment to the planning board. And so earlier this evening, in executive session, we interviewed Erin Kraus. For. On the planning board as an alternate. I will, I I can go ahead and make a motion. I'll make a motion to appoint Erin Rouse to the planning board as an alternate member. With a term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. Second, the motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. I motion passes four one. And then up next, we have action on appointments to the York River Stewardship Committee. Similarly, before our meeting, we met with Carl. Honkanen, apologies if I said that correctly, Philip Recky. To interview them for positions on the York River Stewardship Committee. And it looks like we have one open seat for. And a full position and an alternate, which I'm noticing now that we didn't talk about in the interview. Any other discussion on? I'll go ahead and make a motion to. I appoint Carl. Honkanen and. As a full member of the York River Stewardship Committee and Philip Recky as an alternate member of the York River Stewardship Committee. Your motion and the second, any discussion? And up next, we have unfinished this is number three, action on stormwater ordinance amendment. So we had a public hearing on this. Last meeting. And this is a. Set of ordinance changes that are required in order for us to comply with this for stormwater management. And we had a public hearing on this with no comments or anything. And at this point, we can go ahead and vote to take action on those amendments.
I'll make a motion that we. The. Ordinances as.
Thank you. We have motion in a second. Any other discussion on this one? All those in favor say aye, Jeff. Alright, up next, we have unfinished business update on LD two thousand and three. We don't have any.
No, no information. I just have an update.
Okay, go ahead.
So all we've been working on since, you know, they started this process when they. Gave it to us last year. When Jenny came on board, she started work behind the scenes, or she's been working with. S and P D C. S and P D C has a. Draft ordinance. That will address, if you're going to the planning board on May seventeenth. And address the new definition of affordable housing. It's called out in our ordinance, increased housing density. Density bonuses could be, there's an update to table A, table B. When an application for the playing board is necessary. Jenny just writes it. A lot of work's been put into the changes. She's confident that. If we're not there, we're we're close to being on target for what. Makes sense for South Borough. On Thursday, she'll be doing a PowerPoint presentation. The PowerPoint we present is planning board for the next meeting and she's doing one for me on Thursday, me and Jenny. And and then clarity in order to expedite the adoption of amendment changes. Once it gets to the planning board, it'll be on your lap and she'll come and do that presentation. But just, you know, following up with LD six sixty five. Which was the alternate bill to go through this that Tiffany worked on. I want to thank Tiffany for all the help on that. Jeff, you know, if you have any idea, as Tiffany mentioned, and you were, that's last I knew what had happened was LD six.
Can you hear me? I'm I'm on the road.
Can you jump in on LD two sixty five and see if there on six sixty five where where that may be at?
Um, yeah, so there may have been emails out from from MMA. Six sixty five and all adjacent bills were. Killed with a sweep in committee. A new bill was passed with bipartisan. Some bipartisan support in the committee. It provides for a six month extension for. Town council governments and a twelve month extension for. Town meeting governments where you need the ordinance. I would want to make the council aware and I'm happy to have a follow up conversation. Other changes in that bill. Also pretty much strike home rule as far as ADUs and allow them to go up. Without planning board or CEO approval, including in the shoreline zone. So I would put that forth to the council is, you know, do you need the extension in in getting? Everything that's gonna come with it. It is not the desired outcome. It's still gonna be worked on, but. There are more changes to come and this change would work, this bill will require two thirds. On the House and in the Senate in order for get to get an emergency. Passage to go into effect immediately. Otherwise, it doesn't go into effect till ninety days after we adjourn, which we don't know when that will be.
Can I just ask, just. Just a clarifying statement. So LD six sixty five. Is. That. More or less provides an extension and like. A bunch of amendments two thousand and three, is that fair? Like add-ons to two thousand and three?
Not six six five, six six five is dead and they chose another bill to use as a vehicle to both make fixes and. Expand the purview. Of two thousand and three, and then they added the accent just into it. I don't have high hopes that that will get two thirds of a vote, just to put on your radar.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, thank you, Tiffany. With that said, just, you know, for the council knowledge, we are moving forward to get it done. I want to compliment Jenny and also thank S and P D C for the help. But Jenny, even though being a one person. Then and so we all stopped, took this lead, did a lot of work on nights and weekends, making sure we got this done, so. I guess, you know, she will be a forward, it'll be out and it'll be at the playing board level soon. You know, we're going as fast as we possibly can to get it done, try to get it right and I'll make mistakes. So that's the update for two LD two thousand questions.
How does billing work as far as with S and P D C? Because I didn't see anything from S and P D C on. As as far as I call from the checks of the warrant.
They're slow with their billing. Typically, at least every other month.
And where are, where's the growth area? Conversation with with.
I I don't have any details. I'm sorry. I just, I I feel that's where we're at when, you know, I I don't have anything to give you. I would say it'll come with a presentation of a new.
Okay, so in order to get the presentation. Participate in the planning board meeting. Next week or when.
It'll come to us after the planning board.
Do you want to see it ahead of time? You can come Thursday, I guess, and see it Thursday with my office if you want to come to that.
No, I want to, I want to be a part of. The knowledge of of what's what's going on. As you know, I.
Well, you can't act as outside the body of the council, right? You've got to act as a body of the council of five. So I gotta, I give it to one, I have to give it to five.
I'm not asking for a specific. I'm I'm just asking to when it when it would be presented.
As soon as, as soon as it gets to the comp, the the planning board on the seventeenth and. Whatever they do with it after that, you know, it'll be up. It's it's in their purview first. As it normally would the process and then. You know, as soon as they. They could do, you know, a couple of things, right? They could, they can attempt to fix it what they want, think. Or they could ask for a workshop from you guys.
Right, so. I guess my concern is, you know, I'm grateful for all the hard work, but. I want personally, I want to make sure that S and P D C is heavily involved with that. That that means that we need to make a motion to ensure that S and P D C is heavily heavily involved. I don't know how that works. I think there's a lot involved with it. That I'm concerned about. So that's all I'm I'm saying.
I'm a little lost on where you're going with this. It's with the planning board. And S and D C will work with the planning board. And then they'll get it to us.
Is that guaranteed? That that's how it works. That's that's not us.
S and P D C, when all LD two thousand and three came down. So S and P D C took the lead for the county. And has the county southern main plan. And and development. They they took the lead for all the town that have to deal with. And then they broke off all those towns and went into, so like we had Lee J, I think, who worked on ours. And he took our ordinances and took LD two thousand and three and helped Jenny craft and they went back and forth to to write the ordinance based on what the law said and how it applied to our.
Um, so can I just, can I just clarify some of this information real quick? Yeah, go ahead, Jenny. Okay, um, so Lee J has been involved in answering questions. And telling us exactly like how to put it into our ordinance in a way that. Not not specifically the sections, Jeff, but mostly like the information that needs to go in there and how it needs to go in there. So. The presentation that I'm going to give Tim on Thursday, Lee J is actually going to do a final look at it. Tomorrow morning and he's gonna give us feedback to make sure that it's the way it's supposed to be. It's in every section of our ordinance where it's supposed to be. And everything kind of makes sense going forward. Um, so they will have the final say before it goes to the planning board. And I'm pretty confident that if Lee J makes any changes to it, they're gonna be very minimal because. All the information that we embedded into the ordinance came directly from him for the most part.
And where's the growth area? Because in order to for two thousand and three to. Not have. ADUs and with all the different housing, we need to have a designated growth area, which South Borough does not currently have a. Designated growth area because we don't have a a valid. Comprehensive plan, so that's my question.
Yeah, so the answer to that is ADUs won't be touched, other than the language in the ADU is gonna be changed a little bit. Just to come up to today's standard, but it's mostly in the. Anywhere where there's connect, this is my understanding of it, but Lee J would be able to answer this better for you, but anywhere where there's town sewer. There's going to be up to. I think we use towns where as a thing where if it if the land had or the parcel has town sewer, they can have up to four. But it spelt out where it goes double, then there's bonus density that comes in. So I think I think it will all make sense to you once you see the PowerPoint. Can you guys still hear me?
You just cut, you just muted yourself for a moment.
I'm sorry. So I think once you see the presentation, I think it's gonna make more sense to you and you'll probably, you might have questions there, but I think that it it's gonna make sense.
Okay, no, I I appreciate it not to step on anyone's toes or say that no one, you know. Offend anybody. I'm just. Of all the people currently on this meeting, you you probably understand the. The vast implications that this has and and I think you can appreciate my. My my asking the question, because in my mind, a a. A growth area does not need, shouldn't necessarily be a. Made up by S and P D C or a planner, but it should be a planning board. Discussing where that needs to be and then that'd be come to the council where we have a. Discussion, not just pass it through because we think that's where.
And I I think Jeff, this will proceed much like all of our other ordinances where the presentation will come to the planning board. They can iterate on it. Then it will come to us. We can iterate. If we need to have a workshop in there to make sure we understand all the nuances, I have totally on the table too.
That's correct. Yep, that's exactly how it will work. The planning board will be seeing it for the very first time on the seventeenth and they'll be able to make. Changes or recommendations as they see fit. I'm not sure that it will go right from the planning board to a public hearing, right to town council. I'm sure that they're gonna want to do changes. And make changes and have a load of questions and I expect that when you guys see the presentation, when it's passed forward to you, that you're gonna have a lot of questions too. And we're just gonna do our best to work through this and answer them and hopefully come to, you know, a good understanding about how this is gonna fit into our ordinance, so.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Sorry, I can't, I can't raise my hand. I'm driving. I just wanted to jump in real quick, just to clarify for myself. In conversations that we're having with other representatives in conversation that I had with S and P D C. In the past week. They are not aware that they have been officially charged with. Helping South Berwick create this ordinance. In a certified by community planner capacity, which is what is highly recommended because of the intricacy. Of the law to avoid lawsuits for the town in the future. So right now, as far as S and P D C is aware. They have not been formally charged by the town to work on compliance with two thousand and three.
Okay, thank you for for bringing that up. I think. Tim and Jen, if we can get some clarity on the, I mean, it seems like Lee J is quite engaged in this process. So maybe there's a miscommunication somewhere with that. But. Representative Roberts, thanks for bringing that up. Tim in general. Get some clarity for us and Jenny, thanks for being on the call this evening and answering our questions. I think. There'll probably be a million more after this, so just brace yourself. Any other comments on two thousand and three?
About the appointment earlier and just making sure that folks seated for next meeting.
I'll just mention the new bill is seventeen oh six.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. So six sixty five is dead, seventeen oh six is like the new six sixty five with. Any other two thousand and three? Alright, next we have traffic city update. We don't have any documents for this, so I'm assuming you guys are just giving us some info.
So one thing I do want to mention on LD two thousand and three. Going back to a second, you can participate at the planning board level. Long you identify yourself as a citizen. So you're welcome to go in and watch that, do whatever, ask all the questions. You know, I want to make clear that that's not what I was saying. I was acting as a body. I have to present it to the body, but you're welcome. Anybody's welcome to go in. And, you know, just if you decide to. Chime in, please chime in as I'm here as a citizen, not acting on behalf of the council. We had a meeting with. The, and I follow guys, we'll wait hand out. We had a meeting with Maggie O T. You got one? Mainly, this was with the state of Maine. This is after they invaded the state of Maine. Took our report, read our report, reviewed it, and this, these are what they came back with, the questions and. Concerns and primarily. First question, the first bullet, what is the sentiment from the town regarding traffic signal? And significant proposed losses of pack. And significant proposed losses of parking, if any, um. It's my understanding that signals have been proposed here in the past and heavily opposed. Similarly, I'm pretty sure we would have removed pockets in the middle of Main Street, pulling this section a long time ago. If it hadn't been resisted. Um, is the town wel- town welcoming these recommended changes? Are they making a parking somewhere else? Um, so those are the first couple of comments, and then you can see they talked about traffic timing. The roundabout alternative, I mean, it's born, um, within that roundabout alternative. So Bango Technics went through the process and they only finished about half of it once they looked at it because we told them we really weren't interested in it. Because it was gonna capture so much land. However, because of federal D O T funding. Um, and with main D O T, they said that we gotta have that completely finished. That as the uh Spago Technics would have to go back and finish the information on the roundabout. Whether we like them or not.
At both intersections?
It, yeah, well, wherever they put it in a report. Because in order to submit the report, the report would not be allowed and a federal law will be kicked out as an incomplete report. It has to show everything pros and cons was looked at. So that was pretty much the the overall gist of the meeting. After the meeting was over, we contacted Nikki um that. Yeah, we started talking with them and Nikki basically, you know, we talked about. Cost and funding and. The whole project and she basically said that they're gonna finish it. They'll put the information in the roundabouts. They'll send a draft to the town and then they'll send a draft to main G O T. And it's gonna be no charge to the order, so they're not gonna charge us any additional money for that initial. The beer hot is, I wanted to bring you tonight. This kind of this information to let you know, we had a meeting. With the state G O T, they're talking about four potential funding. Path. But their first biggest question in the time when they spent a lot of time on was. Um. And in a nutshell, what they basically said was. You know, we've, we've been involved in multiple proposals, proposals in South Berwick over the years and each time it gets put on the shelf and. We spend lots of time, we don't go, it doesn't go anywhere. So. The funding that they're talking about in the next two to four years is is both federal and state funding, which is competitively based. They did not really wanna put. I guess best way to say it, put us in a queue if we're not gonna be serious about funding the project and doing it. Um, he said it'll be a lot of work and there's a lot of effort to move it forward, so. I guess I'm, you know, before we, we haven't had a public hearing, we're gonna, they're gonna finish the roundabout stuff, hopefully next week to get that the. Uh, us and get it to main G O T. Then we're all set, I think we'll be ready to go for public hearing and I get that you can't speak on probably until your public hearing, but. Just so you know, that's a G O T concern.
So it sounds like, you know. So Bago Technic, Technic is gonna finish the report, so it's complete. I mean, and and then once that's all together, we can have a public hearing or we'll have Sabego Technics there and then. Is it true that after some, at some point after that public hearing, they're gonna need some formal action? To be taken by the council in order to feel comfortable moving forward of all the. All the things that are required to get this going, okay?
Yes, yes, and in reality, so we we asked them, you know, if we were to get this funding. What would this look like if we could get both federal funding and then they have full local or state composed. Different areas. You know, what what are we looking to downtown time from start to finish completion? They said five years. It'd take five years to get this done, take a a year or so, get it engineered. Then it's gonna take some time to get the surveys, the right aways, the. G O T, um, you know, then they'll do the environmental stuff and so. You know, everybody's looking at the stuff that was drawn by S M, by Spago, I get some. Agencies on my head, I apologize. Been a crazy week, so everybody, you know, I've had a couple of conversations with people about those schematics that Sabego Technics drew in their report, that's schematic. It's all that is. There, it's not engineered yet, that that would come later on from main G O T, they would hire as part of the project, they get grant funding for that. That's, that's what that is, so when we have a public hearing, G O T will also attend. Because they're s- they're now on board with the project. Their only biggest thing is they said, please don't make us drive all the way to South Berwick and attend a public hearing if there's not, if you're not serious about it. The other time we do it, then we don't hear anything for six months and it gets put on the shelf. And they said, you know, you're taking time away from other communities that really need. That traffic stuff, if you, if, you know, and I said, no, I said that. And General's there, she attended, she can really, you know, speak on that half. We said at this particular point, the council has ordered this and ordered this to move forward. Ordered the study to be done, to get the pertinent facts and then present that. The council is absolutely aware of traffic safety, pedestrian safety. They are aware of packing, but they realize too, that it's gone too long, too late. We're not enough alternatives now, now we're down to the wire. And we have to make some changes because this is the last time to do it for the next twenty, thirty, forty years. So G O T said, fine, we're, we're on board with it. It looks good, we like what we've seen so far. They gotta finish the roundabout, the their federal D O T package. And then we'll all get together and. Do that, so questions or comments or thoughts, ideas, please?
Sounds good. One other thing that they did mention is because the Jewett House is right there on the corner of Route Four in. Um, Maine, that even though we're going forward and doing the extra research on the traffic circle, that. M D O T at that level wouldn't ever take something in a historic society and then take a section of that out. But to get the federal funding, we just have to go through this process of the extra research.
You still have the right to choose what either project you want. But if we submit a project without the finished roundabout piece in it, and federal D O T kicks it out, says it's incomplete and never gets goals anywhere. And it's not gonna cost us anything else, so input from the council, thoughts, ideas, please, anything?
Do we have a hearing scheduled yet for?
No, cuz I'm waiting to, so now we we just gotta wait to hear. So Sabego Technics has to finish the last piece. Then they'll send that to us and and D O T, D O T will review that. Because we agreed to do it as an addendum to the act report, so D O T can see that, I mean, uh. Because the federal D O T will see the main D O T and the town of South Berwick are already working together to correct that any deficiency. We're gonna do that and then once they get that, then main D O T is comfortable doing a public hearing. So they, and they said they will come and support the project. So.
Did, did we get a timeline from Sabego Tech of how long it would take them to, two weeks?
Yeah, so I'm anticipating. Something early June.
So more than likely, we'll probably. Maybe be able to schedule a public hearing at our next council meeting.
I would think so.
Just, just second, I'm gonna let the council, anyone else?
Um, any type of, uh, as soon as I'm like funding, you're saying federal funding, is that like? Like local match or any?
Well, there's four, there's four sources plus the federal funding. And four potential, four potential are are state G O T project of types of grant funding. Um, and they all do different things. And then there's a fifth piece, which is the federal. Uh, package that. Washington passed last year, the infrastructure package, there's federal monies there. And then there's another piece right now that the state's attempting to.
The Piscataqua River Project?
Piscataqua River Project that they're waiting to kick off and that would be a sixth piece of funding. So there there are all these funding packages, but. The, the main piece of it, council said was that. D O T was very frank with telling us, please don't waste that time. And I said, I don't believe we're there, I believe we're very sincere trying to correct the issues that are at hand. Which are both traffic and pedestrian safety and 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 M D O T did like what they saw, they were. They said it looks like they've done a good job with Sabego Report, a lot of the technical information is there. How it would and that they said the lights make sense because it can handle the overload. In five to ten years to come, so they did do that, so that that was part of it.
In the Piscataqua River Project, we had mentioned that before, where. God forbid if something were to happen to the bridge on I ninety five, where would all that traffic go? So if we, if that project kicks off with them the way they think it's going to, it directly affects our community. Therefore, there would be more funding available because they would be enhancing our roads, not to make it handle that extra traffic.
And and the difference they said they talked about, you know, th- these are just. There's, there's no exact number. He said at the Piscataqua River Bridge Project, when you'd be looking at a difference of five billion for the project and I mean. So he said that there's a lot of different. Scenarios, even the first step is that we gotta see a buy-in from the town council. And the town itself, because if we don't get that, we're not moving forward.
I just gonna say, I was surprised to see this come through so quickly and I think. Now you've mentioned that you've had other dealings or. And B O T and have a relationship there, so I'm, I'm sure that kinda help. Grease the skid a little bit, so thank you very much. I'm, like I said, surprised that this came along. I have a question. Does fixing up the road or like that would be a big project? Does that get wrapped into the, would that be an increase in that tip district? Or does the road not count? You know what I mean?
Road doesn't count, we don't, we don't get taxed on the road. But so, so another piece of that is. Jump in on that, if we had a downtown revitalization plan. That we attached the con plan. And we had that and that was ready to go, then we could attach more federal monies to that. To while we're digging up Main Street, for instance, the hypothetical we talked about. Um, the, the Dale, the dude he was talking about was putting all underground. Wires, getting rid of all the telephone poles and all that stuff. You know, and and bringing Main Street back to its original, so there, there's a lot of exciting possibilities around this. Um, the first was putting our best foot forward and getting G O T to say, yes, we're, we're here to help. And I just wanna make sure that I presented to you to say. It's okay to go back to D O T and say. We're serious about this, correct?
Yeah. And then I, I mean, I think then it seemed like the path forward then as we get this in front of the public to hear what, what. Residents have to say about the plans that are out there and then. After, at some point after that, we would take some type of formal action as far as. And then that would be, assuming we, we did do that, that would be sufficient for M D O T to be like, okay, they're, they're, they're actually in it.
So and right, and to answer council city, your question, really what they're talking about is eighty-five. Uh, uh, eighty-five, no, ninety, no, nine, ninety-five and five, finally. Ninety percent federal, five percent state and five percent. So, you know, if all the pieces connect right and then. The, the, we talked about comprehensive plan, that's right on, that's right where we need to be with that. And the only other piece from that is. They, they asked about a, you know, a downtown revitalization plan, we said we, and Denise has already said we'll start that this summer. And jump on that, so all the pieces are starting to line up. And that's where we need to go with it because. We said to D O T, they said, once you timeline, they said slower than fast. Because we'd rather do this once right and get it all right. Anything we can do to help the businesses, to help the pedestrians, to help the traffic flow that helps the town. Makes this better all the way around for years to come. So G O T said perfect work with them.
Any other coun- coun- council?
But Clary can explain so. I've been driving these streets since I was fifteen. And my father wanted to support me. The biggest concern that I think even the previous council's back. That the problem went down on is the parking issue for the businesses. And it's not just the businesses, the citizens of the South Berwick, they go to the businesses. So if we're gonna have a ma- major problem with traffic. Of course, in today's age, unfortunately, very few people come to meetings. And even used to go to those meetings and they spoke up and the council bowed for them because. The gateway to Maine. The gateway to Western Maine and it's called traffic. If years ago, we only could have got that bypass, we would have started right down here. Would have cut all that heavy traffic. But I've heard stories about businesses at the time, didn't wanna slow down any traffic, ain't much stopping, they were going home. But that's my only big concern is that the public hearing somehow, I hope people come. If they're all on board with it, fine, do it. But if it's gonna be a disaster. Businesses will be gone. That's my only, my biggest concern, business.
Thank you.
And public.
So, and I agree, you know, for all to with, uh, what Mr. Clary said. So we have been talking with businesses, one of the businesses' concerns is people don't. They agree, parking in front of their business. They said the problem we have right now is because traffic is so dangerous, people won't park across the street and come to the business because they don't wanna get rolled over. That's the issue. We gotta, not only do we gotta look at parking in front of business, we gotta make parking safe for pedestrian travel. And so that all parking can be utilized, not just some of it. You know, that, that's one of the big issues. That this, this project will tip pedestrian safety, pedestrian crossing, traffic, well. Intersections, you know, you asked it to go from Norton Street to. Um, you know, two thirty-six in Maine, it takes an academy, all these pieces are in there. There's crosswalks, how, how do people walk across it? And when I talked to businesses, they said that was one of the important issues too. It is traffic, but they said, how many cars go by here every day, no stop. But what about the people who stop and trying to get to our business and they can't get to others? That's another problem. They recognize there is an issue of it, so just, just so you know, we've talked to some of the business.
Alright.
Yeah, so as far as that, we'll make sure we publicly notify them. But I wanna reiterate that we have, we have a website, we post our minutes. We, we have a YouTube channel, we post our videos in, in social media in today's world. If you're not aware of what's going on in the down south for work in the town council and the planning board. I don't know what to tell you. There's many places to find out. So a lot of people.
Sorry, Cliff, we're gonna go ahead and move on. Um, alright, I mean, we're good on traffic. Alright, moving on to new business number one, um. Take action on the meeting on June thirteenth, so. Um, we have an election on June thirteenth, which I think the only ballot item, I'm looking at Barbara, is school budget. Um, and so because. Um, the staff and others are gonna be um wrapped up in the election, we typically in the past have canceled. Or postponed or rescheduled the meeting for the thirteenth, um, so it sounds like from staff, um. That we prob- we feel like we'd probably be in good shape to just table anything that we would take up on the thirteenth and push it to the meeting on the twenty seventh.
Madam Chair, I moved the council to June thirteenth meeting and moved it to January and to talk all business on June twenty seventh.
Second. Thank you. Any other discussion? All of the favors say aye, Jess?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Mallory votes aye, motion pass five zero. We'll have a week off. And. Up next, um, I kept the donation of the boat and trailer from the firefighter association.
Madam Chair, I move, we accept the vote. Uh, Barb, would you want me to read the VIN numbers or are you okay with? Being not reading them all publicly?
I'm okay with you not reading them publicly because they are posted. Okay.
Uh, one vote. VIN number as posted and the twenty twenty-three venture boat trailer also VIN number listed from the firefighters association. Second.
Thank you, we're motion a second, any discussion?
I'd love to thank the South Park Firefighters Association for this, it'll be very valuable to the town if there is a water rescue. It's greatly needed to replace what they have and it's incredible what they do for the community.
Agreed. Alright, anyone else? Okay, all of the favors say aye, Jessica?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Mallory votes yes. Up next, new business number three, um. Uh, we just need to, as, as we do every year, we need to sign the warrant calling the, um. Uh, election coming up on June thirteenth that we just talked about, um, so calling the M S A D thirty-five budget validation referendum. I think that's right, we can motion. Sign that.
Madam Chair, I move we sign. The order, I have, M S A D thirty-five budget validation re- referendum. For a meeting to be held, uh, or a vote to be held on June thirteenth, correct? Twenty twenty-three. Second.
Any discussion? All the favors say aye, Jess?
Aye.
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Now I wrote yes, motion pass five zero. Unfinished business number four, acceptance of safety grants. Um, so we have received um two safety grants from the main municipal association. And so the uh motion on the table would be to accept those two safety grants from M M A. Uh, motion on the table would be to accept those two safety grants from M M A, and the first is in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars for two sets of dump blocks which hold up. Which are currently holding up the dumps. While staff work underneath them.
But it's it's like a dump body and it's just locks that go in there, so they're ensuring that it doesn't, the dump body doesn't fall down, hydraulic spill all over.
Thank you. Um, and then the second is three thousand one hundred forty dollars for security cameras at our town garage located at Twelve Front Street, that one's easier to understand. Um.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to accept both the safety grants from the main municipal association. For total of five thousand four hundred eighty-one dollars.
Second. Uh, we have motion a second, any?
Um, can we just check the math on that? I'm getting five thousand six hundred forty.
Yes. You're correct.
Right about that.
Do you need to redo the motion, Barbara? Okay. Alright, um. Any other discussion? All in favor of accepting the safety grants on the amount of. Five thousand six hundred and forty dollars, say aye. Jessica?
Aye.
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Aye, motion pass five zero. Up next, unfinished business number five, the red barn.
I would love to make this one, Madam Chair, I move that we allow town manager to tear down the red barn twenty years too late, funds to be expended from the. Yeah?
C I P.
C I P account.
Second. Any discussion?
So this is come up, um, I was called by a couple of citizens. Uh, a couple of weekends ago, and down there, there's no parking, the red barns now, and it's. It's a depleted state of condition, it's not worth repairing, just taking up space. We have a the 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 guide tractor we bought for the wall field last year. Um, so we're just gonna tear it down and make parking there. Essentially.
Do you know how many parking spaces we'll get?
Oh, well. I I couldn't be assured, I don't know. But well, well, we're not gonna make out the parking space. We're just gonna tear it down and, you know, you probably get ten or fifteen parking spaces, maybe more.
So on a busy Saturday, you're gonna put forty cars with that town barn is. Cause we put at least fifteen where the concrete is for the basketball.
Yeah.
So it'd be huge for that.
We're gonna tear it down, then they're gonna find out these, they, you know, dig up the spent and put. gravel down, and I wanna, you know, part of the agreement, we put it out to bid, we got four bid. Um, Huzzy. Construction, is that what it is? Yeah.
I don't, it's Huzzy excavator.
Huzzy excavating is donating their time.
Okay.
They're gonna donate a bunch of time, so the actual only cost of this will be the fill and the haul material away, so I wanna thank Huzzies for their time. Um, the rest will be done by town labor, so that'll really be a huge help. Um, and what we did do is in an effort to buy, so originally. They were looking at putting up, um. Trying to figure out. Put up a garage at Powder House Hill for about twenty, oh, twenty thousand. And they were gonna try to do that. Um, spending some funds from Powder House Hill. So myself and Jen and Jay went on a adventure and uh started looking, we were able to find pre-vab sheds and garages. Found a company and um.
You jumped ahead.
Oh yeah, we jump into the next uh.
You're on the warming hut, we got.
No, I'm finishing your red barn. I'll I'll give you.
Okay.
I'll let me tell you how.
Good segue, okay.
But we'll get it, so in in the end, we're able to get. A pre-built garage. And three shed, two sheds, including the new warming hut, which we'll talk on the side. But lots than the price for the garage, delivered, set up, painted, installed, warranties and everything.
And that'll be a powerhouse.
And so the garage, and the new one will hopefully be a powder house, but the. Um, new shed is going right to Huggies Field, we put the tractor in there and they can stir any ball equipment or anything else they need to do. So it won't take up any space.
Okay.
Okay. Thoughts, ideas?
We have a motion on the table to let you guys tear down the red barn.
Are we still discussing or?
The red barn?
Yes, yeah. Um. I certainly appreciate Huzzy offering their services. Could we do a controlled burn with the fire department for practice?
No.
No?
Okay, G E P won't let us.
Okay, not with what's in that barn.
Well, no, that's what was my concern, um, my.
They didn't fight about him, he's gonna practice in it, but I can't burn it, I'd have to get a permit from G E P. They'd have to come down, test the material, and then if there's anything, any lead or anything, tires and the roof and all that stuff, we have to.
They are gonna use it for some training before.
They're not gonna burn it.
Perfect. Um, my, um, another comment that I would like to make is I totally understand that parking is an issue there. Um, however, I'm not fully on board with um. Paving paradise and putting up a parking lot, and the only reason I say that is. That's, that section of land um is zoned for recreational use only, correct? Cause we have looked at it for other buildings and we were denied because of the certain zoning that's there. So my thought is, um, there's a lot of people in town that have actually wondered about maybe pickleball courts or skate parks or. You know, other um entertaining things, um, that's recreational, so I'm just concerned if. Um, we make that a parking lot, there goes some valuable real estate for recreational purposes, so. I would propose, I would like to propose that, sure, we can make it a parking lot now, but if something down the road comes up, like. What, you know, aforementioned thoughts, that maybe we could actually consider those.
Yeah, we also have the thirty-nine acres across the street too, that we can always expand on for the recreation law.
Am I hearing you saying you want to one million dollars on the budget this year for skate park?
No.
Just go look at Elliot's skate park.
No, that's a, it's a full sun area that would be a great addition to a community garden, I mean, there's, the possibilities are endless, you know, I just don't wanna make it a parking lot.
Oh, well, and when I say make it a parking lot, I'll clarify. We're just gonna gravel it over, we're not paving anything.
Right.
We're just grabbing.
Yeah.
So right now, people can just park there.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to um participate in the department meetings, and Nikki was saying that they have lined the basketball courts for pickleball. So we will have a facility in town with. On the section right next to the basketball.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion? We have a motion on the table?
I just had a question, so I know it's been brought before to, uh, I I always hear that it was. There was something holding it to being. Was it part of, I think you asked a question though, what, a couple of months back about it, that some be restriction.
Yes, it's for recreational use only, it's part of the deal when they built it, it's a state, it's one good police station there or anything else.
And and the and the barn wasn't a part of it, like you had to stay, I.
No.
Okay, I I thought I heard.
No.
It was something like that.
The barn was, the barn was the barn, and then they had some great volunteers that turned it into the teen center, and that lasted, I don't know, two or three years, I think, while my teens were teens. And then the volunteers, like every other project, moved on with their older kids. And it flooded out and grew mold and it's what it is now.
It was an issue, what you're talking about was an issue when the police station was on the table. Because I think that we had looked at, before I was on the council, I think, looking at that piece of property for the police station, that's not considered recreation, but.
And yes, I lost the bet to Jen a couple of months ago on that. Must be some ice cream.
Any other discussion?
I just think like, um, seeing the sign kind of falling off and it's become an eyesore drag and driving by Saturdays and. Even during a weekday, knowing how many people are using those fields, it doesn't look good for the community if you have things that are derelict, they're acting in a way.
Alright, any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion on the table, say aye. Jessica?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Aye, motion pass five zero. Um, up next, we have the ice rink warming hut, um. So.
We just covered that.
I gave you a preview.
A little bit, yeah.
You got the picture of what it looks like, it's all pre-built. Um, we've been talking about it for years. Um, well, yeah, but you know, she had the bond money for, what, two years? And we haven't used it, so we're gonna use bond fund money for this, and then the rest of it was coming out of the Powder House Hill.
Okay.
We finally got it, Jay's gonna put the base down. We'll put that there, that'll go right where the old shed is now, when you pull in. And then the garage will go beside that, the new garage, cause the old garage at Powder House is falling in, collapsing. And that's where they put the snowmobile, and that's a liability, so we had to do something there. And then that shed that's there. Right now is gonna go up to the soccer field for Nikki to have storage of soccer fields, so her soccer flies. So we end up getting four buildings for the price of.
Great.
And saving the town some money.
And this is bond fund from, cause we didn't have any bond fund applications, but it's, this is from.
Two years ago.
Okay, cool. So no action for us on this?
No, just an informational, thank you.
Awesome. Um, alright, new business number seven, town council rules of order, um, so included in, um. Our packet is a draft of, um. South Borough Town Council Rules of Order and Procedure for um how we conduct meetings, we have the. Right and the legal authority, I guess, to create rules for ourselves, um, and I think, you know. Given that we've got lots of newer people on the council, I'm newish to being chair still, I consider myself. Um, I think this is a good opportunity for us to just be really buttoned up in terms of how we're gonna conduct ourselves in meetings, and then also so anyone from the public is. Clear on what to expect if they wanna come and speak out on anything, so it's just a good kind of continuous improvement move, I think, for us, so. Um, thank you, Tim, I know you took a stab at this initial draft, uh, I'll be honest, I haven't reviewed this thoroughly, I didn't read every page of the uh, the the packet like Melissa did, but um. I think this is really kind of for our eyes at this point to discuss later. Um, I would like to suggest, if there's an openness from the council. Um, we have, a week from today is our annual town meeting, and afterwards we'll have a council meeting to take action on the um. Warrant correctly, correct, right, we have, we typically have a me- meeting right afterwards where we take action, no?
Oh, you just have a town meeting and then you.
No, we always came upstairs and did a, had something, am I, am I making that up?
Yep.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine. Okay. Um, so regardless, we're all gonna be together for the, um. The annual town meeting next week, and so I was wondering if the council would be open to having like a quick workshop afterward, if we could post that to just kind of. Talk through this and see if anyone has any issues, if we need to make any um changes to this before we adopt it at a future meeting. Is that okay with everybody?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so can we get a council meeting scheduled, or sorry, workshop scheduled for, um, after the annual town meeting next week, is that?
They have to set a time.
Yeah.
Would you? Let me offer a suggestion.
Yes.
Would you rather do it on the night that you're off on June thirteen?
I'm sure that's, that's fine.
Then then that gives everybody a couple of weeks to look at this, digest it, make changes?
Sure, we don't have time on.
Yeah. Or or the other thing, the other option is we can meet, if everyone could meet ahead of the annual town meeting next week, we'd meet at five o'clock. Five thirty?
Five thirty.
Yeah.
I, I, so these are, these are coming right out of Robert's rules, correct? Most of them.
So, so after, right, we we adopted the rule in the past, we just been, they haven't been really tight.
Yep.
So in consultation with legal counsel and looking at other ordinances that we're looking at and rules, one of the things we, we haven't updated our. Town code, but there is a provision if you can make your own rules, under your ideas or just proper rules of order. So I got from the reference from Bernstein Sure, three other towns to look at, so I pulled these, Brunswick, Cape Elizabeth. Um. Brunswick, Cape Elizabeth, and. I can't remember, Hallwell or somebody, the one I want, and I pulled their their city council. I pulled that and then I pieced this together based on that, so this is all something somebody else had.
Yeah.
I told, most of them are a lot bigger than that. I watered this down so that it kind of fit us, all of them, I mean, I. There's not a lot to do other than I would ask you to just put your eyes on it, like you say, it's wrong, it's just formalizing and stuff. What I would recommend is pay attention to the public's speech piece and. Because then following that, what you pass is, I would recommend that on the agenda, where it says public to speak in small print. We ask the clerk to please instill the rules that's listed here, so the public, when they get the warrant, when they get the agenda. Will see the rules very clearly printed in front of them, they do it in the small warrant, and all the other towns I've ever worked in, it's all on the agenda. It's right in front of them, so when they pick it up, they have it. So then can't be argued about, no one can say, I can do this, I have. That's all looking for.
Yeah.
So it shouldn't be, like John says, this is very. This is not my language, this is already been vetted by three other towns and so forth.
So do you all feel like we need to have a workshop, or could we just plan to review this, and we have this on the agenda next time, and we can?
That's what I would. We can put it on the agenda, I don't need a workshop. I honestly.
Yeah.
Is that okay? Okay, just kidding, about the workshop next week, we'll have the annual town meeting, um, so homework for everybody, review this, bring to our next meeting, any uh, any questions or edits you have. Thank you, Tim, for pulling out, it's good. Um. And lastly, the Facebook page.
So with bringing on, uh, a new person who's got. Technical experience working with websites, uh, not websites, but Facebook and social media. Um, part of the budget was to have her do that, so we've been working with her consultation, we got some advice from legal counsel. Uh, we're getting ready to put together, and I talked to the council chair. Um, so we're gonna put together, we'd like to put together a town Facebook page. Um, we looked at a lot of other towns and cities and how they do theirs, we're gonna run after their model. Um, I know, the reason I hadn't done it earlier, we didn't have the staff. So and and there had to be some questions on how we post up. So, um, we've got the feedback from legal, we've got the staff to do it. Um, it's not gonna be interactive, it's not gonna be me talking to people out there, it's an informational, it's gonna be. Any about info, it's gonna simply say this is a municipal government uh page to provide outgoing information for people. There's ways to contact, if they wanna contact, if they have a website, they have our email address, and they have a telephone, they can do that, this is not, this is not a debatable place, this is just. Something for us to put out information. And accurate information so that it's not misconstrued in any form or manner. Um, because, you know, you get out there on social media, people could put everything, so we'll put just the town's information. That's it, so I'm looking for input or thought from the council.
Make sure the rules are extremely clear. Make sure comments are disabled.
Commentings will be transferred off, both of those residents might have questions about. Will be concluded with a statement directing them to the appropriate town office to contact. All posts will be approved by the town manager or the assistant town manager.
The one thing that I, and I don't know logistically how this actually works, but I'm envisioning, okay, South Borough. Official town page, we post, this thing is happening. Like. Is there a way, and where, like, can that be reposted to the South Borough bulletin? Which then?
Yep, it can, it can, it gets shared, just like South Borough Fire Department, South Borough Police Department, it gets shared over to the bulletin's page.
But all those comments live on the bulletin?
All the comments live on the bulletin page, they never transfer back to.
The town page.
And and those are monitored for content.
So please put my guest. Um, thirty-third birthday is next week, and we're gonna have a birthday party, um. You know, that would be that, but then you could share that with everyone, so, and but on our page, there'll be no comments, somebody can wish you a happy birthday, ten thousand dollars in cash. Questions, other questions?
I think it's a fantastic idea, and I will do my best to direct everybody with a town call with unquestioned. So the South Borough page, but we missed the hours on that page, yes, because. It's very difficult apparently to go to our new awesome town website, which is fantastic, by the way. Great, other than the pop. But, um, could we just put dump hours? And we need to pay special attention to, because I've looked every time to ask, do we have a holiday? The answer is go to the town webpage. Well, it's not on the town webpage when we're closed for a holiday transfer station.
We'll put it up.
Cause I looked last time, I got fired by saying that, then I went and looked and it wasn't there. Those are some. Hey, but right, but.
That was Easter, right?
Yeah, yes, man, it was Easter.
Those don't confuse you.
But if it's, if it's, if we can direct them and tell everybody, I think that'll help. That's a great idea.
I just have a quick um comment about, um, like, almost like a brand recognition or outward appearance and needing to keep within format and so on and so forth, so that it's official and it's less likely to be screwed, so on and so forth. So we just need to kind of get our audience used to our brand and then keep using it, so they know that it's.
We did find a TikTok page, right, Barbara, is a TikTok page you found?
Instagram.
Instagram, somebody was using our town seal. And had a, had a doctor's Instagram page, and we called P D and had P D investigate it, I don't know how they solved it, but. Somebody ended up taking the seal down.
They put a post on their Facebook page, Howard's. Unlawful to use the town seal without prior authorization for the town clerk, and within a couple hours, it was dropped down. They weren't doing anything malicious.
Yeah.
But it was just, there was posing, you know, kind of at the top.
Yeah.
So this, this will just be, so now there's no way, you know, I, I don't, I can't explain enough, you have our, you know, you have our, our website, you know, our social media. You have, we have the YouTube channel, we have Zoom links. If, if you can't, if you don't know, what's that?
The journal.
The journal? Yeah, we've got like five or six ways. So I, when people say to me, well, transparency, there's no such thing as not having transparency in this day and age in South Berwick, it's everywhere.
Can I ask, well, I, I'm just gonna throw one more thing in there, because I'd love to. Could we partner with the school on important issues like this, to have it on their LED board on two thirty-six? You know, they, they have all their stuff posted at the end of two thirty-six.
Well, we have the PD one right out here.
Yeah. It's a little harder to see to a point than the
We can ask
I just, I mean, we can put on the PD, but it's just another one of those things of, I there are a lot of people that don't go on social media, I love those people that might not see it, and we don't do it in the newspaper anymore, because nobody gets a newspaper, but everybody drives down two thirty-six.
Here's not about like posting, like, meetings or whatever?
Just the, so public, public hearing on traffic study in town.
Yeah.
I, I will ask them, I don't
It might we can say we gave it a hundred percent.
You stopped at a stoplight, so you have more time to read probably too, right? And, oh, no, you're not stopping at the stoplight.
No, and if you go by in the daytime, you go but, and, and I read it, I go by at four thirty in the morning, so it's very bright, and I see it.
Yeah.
So.
Well, yeah.
For this, do you need action from us? Okay.
I just, I just, no, I mean, I, I just wanted you to know, unless you wanna vote it, tell me not to do it, I'm gonna I think we should do it as a communication tool for the public.
Yeah.
The most important piece is for us to get accurate information out there. Like, I want everybody to know Barbara's been here twenty-seven years, and she's going for thirty. Right? Yes, yes, no, I didn't agree with it, yes, nope.
Got the countdown going there.
Can't retire until I sign it, and I'm not signing it.
Madam Chair, can I make one comment? Yep. Um, Tim, you hit the nail on the head with all of the avenues that you've already said that we have for communication with the town. If you have Facebook, that means you have internet, that means you can access our town website. And everything that we post, so it's just gonna be I understand it's another avenue, but I feel like the three or four hours a week that one of our um assistants or administrators would be spending on a Facebook page could be better utilized somewhere else, because in every place that we put the information out, whether it's on our town website, in a meeting, minutes from a meeting, on YouTube, we still don't get participation from the town. And on our town website, you have the phone numbers of every person that works there, their emails, so pick up a phone or just shoot an email, I, I just, I don't think, I'm not a fan of social media, um, I think it's one of those it's an avenue that can go south real quick, no matter how much you try to police it, and I think that I don't know, I just think that the time of whoever would be running and um, doing this Facebook page could be utilized um, better somewhere else.
Um, I see Deb on Zoom, you have your hand raised, if you could state your name and your address.
Yeah, hi, Deb Gaster, five seventy-six Emery's Bridge Road, I just wanted to point out that the annual meeting is not under the events on the homepage, and it's not on the calendar. So you're talking about people attending, but it's not posted. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Joe? Can you state your name and your address?
Hi, yes, Deb, my name is Joe Dalator, I'm also from five seventy-six Emery's Bridge Road, um, I, I'd like to agree that I think that the town's resources would be better spent supporting, making the webpage better, I don't think the town should be driving people toward uh, profit-making organizations like Facebook in order to find it, um what should be public information. I can't go to the, to the bulletin page, for example, because I don't have a login, so that's not really public communication if it requires that I sign up for an account. Uh, similarly, we're starting to post things in with Microsoft Word, and it's a similar problem for people who don't have a license for that. So I think we should try to be careful to post things in ways that don't require people to have licenses or have accounts that are otherwise not necessary. Thanks.
Thank you. The, what he mentioned about Microsoft Word is, I, I did notice something recently on Agenda or something, when I went to open it, it was a Microsoft Word document instead of, yeah. If it's a PDF, it's not an issue, but if it's Word, that his points a valid one, that if you can't, if you don't have Word on your, here, so it might, it might have just been a mess, but any other thoughts? Or anything on the Facebook thing? You good?
No, I just will, we'll try it, and then we'll reassess it in
Yeah.
a couple of months, if it seems to work. Then we'll take it down.
I, right.
Um. All right, I think that wraps up our business, yeah, I mean, I just, um if you all don't mind, can I step out, go to my daughter's concert, and you can wrap up the end of the meeting for just the last town manager's report? Is that okay? Sorry.
You want to dispense with it, go to dispense with it, then we can all go home. It's on the website, I posted on the website, you just go right on the website the next day, so
What does everyone think? You know I read it already.
Okay, motion to dispense with the town manager's report for this evening. Your motion is second, any discussion? All of the people say aye, Jess?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five zero.
Was it Joe or Jeff?
Yeah.
Come on, come on. Okay. John, Jeff, anything?
That's it.
Okay. All right.
Madam Chair, who are you doing?
Second. All of the people say aye.
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 Thanks.
Thank you.